She's got to tell me when.
Ready to go when you are.
I'm ready.
You are live, Councilmember Juarez.
Great. Okay, everybody. The October 19th, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:05. I'm Deborah Juarez, President Pro Tem of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sawant.
Here.
Strauss.
Present.
Herbold.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Morales.
Here.
Mosqueta.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Council President Pro Tem Juarez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. If there's no objection, Council President Gonzalez will be excused today from today's city council meeting. And Councilwoman Gonzalez, I hope you're not watching. I hope you're getting well, and we look forward to you being back Monday. Hearing no objection, Council President Gonzalez is excused from today's meeting. Two housekeeping matters. So today, you guys, the preference in order to be recognized, you just raise your hand, because I'm not going to be looking at the screen or my phone, so just do this. Dan, can you do this? Good. And so it looks like we got 23 items on today's agenda, and 21 of those are appointments. So we'll just get started. Presentations, I'm not aware of any presentations today. Approval of the minutes. The minutes of the Seattle City Council meeting of October 12th, 2020 have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? I move to adopt the introduction referral calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
But, sorry, Madam President, I move to amend the introduction referral calendar by introducing Council Bill 119942, entitled An Ordinance, Amending Ordinance 126000, which adopted the 2020 budget, amending ordinance 126148, amending a proviso and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts, and by referring it to the city council.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, I was actually, thank you, I was actually, thank you, guys, I was actually on my way there. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lewis, I understand you have an amendment to the introduction, but thank you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize. That's right, I had to queue it up first, and then I moved to amend it. It's been a while since I've been through the amending introduction referral calendar.
That's all right. Okay, so you did that. So is there any objection? We had a second, right? There was no objection, we had a second. Yeah, we did, Lisa, Councilmember Herbold, you seconded it, correct? Yeah.
It's been seconded, Councilmember Juarez, this is Amelia Sanchez, apologies. Before we move on, though, we do need to also suspend the council rules before we can further consider this amendment to the introduction and referral calendar.
That's what I was going to do. So I will go back to, I understand you have an amendment to the introduction referral calendar to introduce a bill that was not distributed by 5:00 PM on Friday. Before you can move your amendment, the council rule relating to circulation of bills for induction will need to be, we will need to be suspended. Hearing no objection, the council rule relating to circulation of bills for introduction, not on the published introduction referral calendar, will be suspended. Hearing no objection, council rule suspended, and Councilmember Lewis has the floor to move his amendment. You want to do that again, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, just to be safe, I'm happy to. I move to amend the introduction referral calendar by introducing Council Bill 119942, entitled An Ordinance, amending ordinance 126000, which adopted the 2020 budget, amending ordinance 126148, amending a proviso and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts, and by referring it to the city council.
Great, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the introduction referral calendar by introducing Council Bill 119942, and by referring it to the city council. Are there any comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Pro Tem Juarez.
Yes. All right.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, and the introduction and referral calendar is amended. Are there any further comments? Will the clerk call the roll on the adoption of the amended introduction and referral calendar?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Pro Tem Juarez.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the amended introduction referral calendar is adopted. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the city council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and council's 2020 work program. I thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate, oh, what happened? Oh. As we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It remains the strong intent of the city council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the city council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that this system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I will call, or the clerk will call on each speaker by name in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once the clerk calls the speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of "you have been unmuted" will be the speaker's cue that is their turn to speak. And speaker must press star six to begin speaking. Please begin speaking by stating your name in the item that you are addressing. As a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction referral calendar, or the council's 2020 work plan, work program. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. Once you hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. If speakers do not end their comments at the time of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you have completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line. If you plan to continue following the meeting, please do so via Seattle Channel or the listing options listed on the agenda. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember again to press star six before speaking. Madam Clerk, you want to start calling our speakers?
First speaker we have is Howard Gale.
Mr. Gale. Sir?
I believe you have to press star six, Mr. Gale.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon. This is Howard Gale, Lower Queen Anne, District 7, speaking on public safety and police accountability. Today, you're going to be confirming the appointments of 21 young people to 21 different Seattle City Commissions and Boards. Virtually all of these boards and commissions have public comment, and most have some meetings in the evening. Contrast this to the Seattle Community Police Commission, the CPC, the only police accountability body that is supposed to represent the community. They are not getting any of these youth appointments. Further, the Federal Court Memorandum of Understanding, which oversees police reform in Seattle, and created the Seattle Community Police Commission, requires, quote, "a mechanism to ensure that membership is representative of the many and diverse communities in Seattle, including members from each precinct of the city," which they do not have on the Community Police Commission, "police personnel, faith communities, minority, ethnic, and other community organizations, and student or youth organizations." For the last five years, there has not been student or youth participation on the Community Police Commission. Further, the Community Police Commission has prohibited public comment. It only holds its meetings during the day, and it has also failed to hold any of its mandated public forums for nearly six years now. These are public forums that are mandated both in the memorandum of understanding from the federal court and in the 2017 city legislation. So once more, I call upon the council, please, you can't just defund the police. You must defund our police accountability system, which has been entirely divorced from the community, and instead fund a real alternative based in the community for police accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else? Madam Clerk?
There's no other speakers.
Great. So are we done with public comment?
Yes.
Okay, with that, then, I will formally close public comment. Let's go to payment of the bills. Please read the title.
Council Bill 119941, a property manager pays side of the claims for the week of October 5th, 2020 through October 9th, 2020, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you. Move to pass Council Bill 119941. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill passed. Are there any comments? Hearing no comments, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, so let's go to our agenda, item one. Please read item one to the record.
Agenda item one, Council Bill 119875, relating to the Seattle Parks Recreation Operation Amendment to the Interlokal Agreement between the Cities of Seattle and the Seattle Parks District.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 119875. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. As sponsor of this bill, I will address it first, and then open the floor to more comments from my colleagues. We've discussed this amendment for a few months now. On April 28th, 2014, the Seattle City Council approved ordinance 124468, which authorized an interlocal agreement between the City of Seattle and the Metropolitan Park District for implementation of park and recreation services and infrastructure in Seattle. Pre-COVID, the original schedule would have been to use this year, 2020, to plan the next six-year cycle of Metropolitan Park District spending, the spending plan, which is scheduled for 2021 to 2026. However, COVID has shifted our timelines, and we must adjust Council Bill 119875, we must adjust, I'm sorry, Council Bill 119875 is an amendment to the interlocal agreement, which authorizes the delay in the event of an emergency like COVID-19. The MPD Board will consider Resolution 36 and 37 later this afternoon, which concurrently will complete the interlocal agreement amended, but on the, what we call the Metropolitan Park District side. I recommend council adopt this bill. Are there any comments on the bill? Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss. Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales. Mosqueta. Councilmember Mosqueta. Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Okay, so we'll just go forward without Councilmember Mosqueta?
Correct.
Okay. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf?
Madam President, I'm sorry, I cannot get off mute. Yes, I.
I'm glad to see that I'm not the only one that does that. Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Great, thank you. So we are going to get into the appointments, 21 of them, the ones that we discussed this morning, that Councilmember Herbold walked us through this morning, thank you very much. Will the clerk please read items two to 22 into the record?
Agenda items two through 22, appointment 1640 through 1660, the appointments of John Ridenzo as member of Landmarks Preservation Board, Jessica Vu as member of Board of Parks Commissioners, Arohi Shoji as member of Seattle Immigrant and Refugee Commission, Mary Claire Sokolowski as member of Seattle Center Advisory Commission, Yasmina Seves as member of Seattle LGBTQ Commission, Chelsea Jacobson as member of Seattle Women's Commission, Rubel Di Mullagata as member of Seattle Human Rights Commission, Paula Orego as member of Seattle Commission for People with Disabilities, Raquel West as member of Seattle Arts Commission, Ori Bryan as member of Seattle Pedestrian Advisory Board, David Kurichenko as member Community Technology Advisory Board, Jose Yulises Nino Rivera as member of Seattle Bicycle Advisory Board, Andrew Parker as member of Seattle Transit Advisory Board, Chloe Caswell as member of Seattle Ventures Commission, Elena Arakaki as member Urban Forestry Commission, Kim Baker as member of Seattle Design Commission, Sam Dawson as member of Pioneer Square Preservation Board, Margaret Honig as member of Design Review Board, Robin Kim as member of Community Involvement, excuse me, Community Involvement Commission, Connor Stein as member of Design Review Board, Caleb Tewaldi as member of Seattle Planning Commission. All appointments for term to August 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, we had an opportunity to discuss and meet a number of the 2021 Get Engaged appointees during this morning's council briefing with Councilmember Herbold. If there's no objection, we will consider the 21 appointments in the following manner. We will begin by considering the first two appointments individually to allow the sponsors to amend those appointments, and then we will open the floor on the remaining 19 appointments for council members to comment on their respective appointments. Once council members' comments have concluded, we will take one vote on the 19 appointments. Are there any questions, objections on this proposal? Good. Okay, after hearing no objections, we will proceed with the first two appointments with an individual vote. So, agenda item number two, I move to confirm appointment 1657. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. Councilmember Strauss, as a sponsor, you are recognized in order to address it and move your amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. John Ridenzo has a master's of, has a master's of architecture from the University of Washington, and recently interned for the city of Kirkland with a focus on historic preservation. I've been informed by our clerk that this is one of the appointments that needs amendment, and I would like to move to amend appointment 1657, appointment packet, by substituting the unexecuted notice of appointment with an executed notice of appointment, as presented on the agenda.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to substitute the notice of appointment with an executed version. Are there any comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the substitute?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales. Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, I got you, thank you.
Mosqueta says I.
Thank you. Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you, I mean, yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, and the substitute is adopted. Are there any further comments on the amended appointment? Okay. So, so now, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the amended appointment?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the appointment is confirmed. We will now move or consider item number three, Ms. Jessica Vu. I move to confirm appointment 1660. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment. As sponsor of this item, I will address it, and I will address it and move it as an amendment. I move to amend appointment 1660 by correcting the record by deleting WU and adding BU, so her last name, it's Jessica Vu. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Since this is one of the appointments that we are moving, let me say a few words for Jessica Vu for the Board of Park Commissioners. This is a mayoral appointment for the Get Engaged program. Jessica has a commitment to racial equity, which is important for the Board of Park Commissioners, where you must identify land use priorities for the community related to open space and outdoor recreation. We're excited to see Ms. Vu be appointed to the Board of Park Commissioners. I recommend the council approve this appointment. So, after that, I say, it has, I move to amend the appointment 1660 by correcting the record by deleting, I did that already. So, did I get a second? Yes, I got a second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the record to correctly reflect Ms. Vu's last name. Are there any comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment?
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the amendment is adopted. Are there any further comments on the amended appointment? I already did that, did the roll call on the confirmation of the amended appointment, the motion carries, the appointment is confirmed. We will now consider the remaining 19 appointments, items four to 22. I move to confirm appointments 1640 through 1656, and appointments 1658 and 1659. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointments. I will now call on each sponsoring council member in the order of the roll call. I will begin with Councilmember Sawant. Councilman Sawant, you are recognized in order to address your appointment.
Sorry, there are no, I don't think there are any appointments from.
I think this one's mine.
Yeah.
Oh, says Sawant, okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for Council President Gonzalez.
Yeah, you're number three on my list here, but, okay, you can go.
Thank you. Now, let me get to my place, because now I've lost my place here. All right. So, this is for Arohi Shogi. Arohi is currently studying at the University of Washington with the aspiration of pursuing a career in law as an African-American immigrant from Ethiopia. Alro, he has demonstrated her internal drive and commitment to challenge institutionalized racism and create positive systemic change by expanding social justice and serving in the community. We're really excited to have her join the Seattle Immigrant and Refugee Commission.
Great, thank you. So, second, we have Councilmember Strauss. You have eight appointments. You are recognized in order to address your appointments.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, and I can just go through and speak to all of them at this time?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Great, thanks. So, the appointment of Elena Arakaki to the Urban Forestry Commission. Elena spoke to us this morning. She is the urban wild, urban to wild coordinator at the Wilderness Society, where she supports an equitable access to parks, green spaces in the county, including, she authored a study on transit access to parks. We're very excited to have Elena. The appointment of Kim Baker to the Seattle Design Commission. Kim spoke to us this morning, and she has a master's in public health and a certificate in human-centered engineering, as well as a background experience as an educator on regional and global health. The appointment of Sam Dawson to the Pioneer Square Preservation Board. Sam has a BA in international affairs from Marquette University. He currently works as the development coordinator at Landessa, and has previously worked for Global Brigades in Panama. The appointment of Margaret Honig to the Design Review Board. Margaret spoke to us this morning. She has a master's in civil and environmental engineering in the UW, and is currently a civil design engineer at Magnuson Clementic Associates. I've said that name 100,000 times without stuttering, and here we are on camera, where she is, she works on site utility and stormwater design and strategic water planning. So, we're very excited to have Margaret to the Designer Review Board. We also have the appointment of Robin Kim to the Community Involvement Commission. Robin has a BA in music performance from Portland State University, and has, as she said this morning, worked in the service industry managing bars and servers before COVID led to the economic recession we're experiencing. She mentioned to us this morning that she's interested in accomplishing lasting change for marginalized communities and building toward equitable policies and strategies while funding BIPOC community projects. Excited to have Robin with us. Also, the appointment of Connor Steen to the Design Review Board. Connor is currently pursuing a master's of architecture at the University of Washington, recently interned with the Miller-Hole Partnership, where he works to reimagine the facilities for nonprofit sailing organization in northeast Seattle. Way up there, indeed, five, Councilmember Juarez. Finally, the appointment of Caleb Tewaldi to the Seattle Planning Commission. Caleb is a Colgate University graduate, an academic counselor for Rainier Scholars, and has worked in Senator Patty Morey's office, helping constituents and residents navigate the federal bureaucracy. Councilmember Juarez, he's also a D5 resident. That's all I have for you. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss, or Councilmember Strauss. Next, we have Councilmember Morales. You are recognized in order to address your appointments, if you so wish. You don't have to, but if you'd like to.
Afternoon, sure. So, we did hear from, I have five, one of whom was not able to attend this morning's briefing, so I'll start with her. Yasi Acevis is a proud queer Latinx woman with a strong background in elevated leadership, building strong teams, and living through the values of diversity inclusion. Yasi has made great strides in her chosen career and seeks to apply her knowledge and passion to the Seattle LGBTQ Commission. She has strong ties to the LGBTQ community and seeks to demystify the inner workings of local government through her term in the Get Engaged program, and additionally hopes to partner closely with the commission to provide continued focus on job training, placement, and accessibility to members of the LGBTQ community, to close the gap for housing and food safety concerns. And then, just quickly, oh, and Yasi is a Get Engaged appointee to the LGBTQ Commission. Raquel Well, Raquel West, that probably happens a lot.
I know what you're going to say.
Raquel West is an appointee to the Seattle Arts Commission. Raquel recently graduated from the University of Washington with a dual degree in geography and history and a minor in American Indian Studies. She studies the physicality of representations within tribal museums, which is useful in her current job as the collections coordinator for the Northwest Native Arts at the Burke Museum. Paula Orego is Get Engaged appointee for the people, commissioned for the people with disabilities. Paula graduated from Palo Alto with a degree in psychology and social action, and has been an anti-bullying advocate and political activist for 10 years. She looks forward to the opportunity to advocate for the disabled, for disability. to advocate for the disabled, for disabled community members in the world of city policy and is currently attending UW, pursuing a degree in speech and hearing sciences. Shalise Jacobson is an Appoinee to the Women's Commission, and she's previously worked at Planned Parenthood, where she created and led a telemedicine pilot program to help address the disparities caused by traditional health clinics, where she communicated with patients to gather feedback about their experiences. She's particularly interested in focusing on how to support women through the pandemic. And finally, we have Robelle Muligata, who's being appointed to the Human Rights Commission. Robelle has lived in Seattle his entire life, recently graduated from Yale, where he studied economics with a focus on urban policy and equality, and is excited to serve on the Human Rights Commission, because he sees an amazing way to amplify the voices of Seattle's underprivileged communities. He wants to advocate for housing equity and criminal justice reform, and he is a D2 constituent, lives in North Beacon Hill. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. The next, we have Councilmember Peterson with four appointments. Sir, would you like to speak to your appointments?
Thank you, Council President Porfirio Perez. Just, big picture on all these appointments. It's amazing what, you know, this great group of young leaders who are able to, who are willing to serve at this time, these challenging times, and really, my hat goes off to the YMCA for the recruiting process, and it's just, it was really, I was really in awe of all the candidates before us this morning who presented to us at council briefing. If the general public wants to see all of those folks who were presenting this morning, just look at the council briefing from this morning. So, four appointments that are relevant to my committee, the Transportation Utilities and Technology Committee. So, the first appointment, which is item 11 on our agenda, appointment 01647, is Ori Bryan to the Pedestrian Advisory Board, which advises the executive and the council on policies and projects related to our pedestrian environment with a focus on safety and access. Brian, or Ori Bryan, gets engaged in volunteer activities wherever possible. Ori's demonstrated history of helping others, including as a volunteer crisis counselor and tutoring adults at the Seattle Parks Library on civics, math, English, and job readiness skills. The next appointment is David Kirachenko to the Community Technology Advisory Board. That board is going to become even more important as we discuss Internet for All. And in fact, David did mention his commitment to increasing equitable access to technology and broadband internet throughout the city. David is a fellow at the Agora Computer Security Group and has extensive technical experience bringing to the table, too. So, fully support that appointment. Then, Jose Rivera to the Seattle Bicycle Advisory Board. Is a software engineer at Lyft. Jose has extensive experience working on transportation network computer system, is an avid user of Seattle's growing bicycle network, and will advocate for its continued improvement. Finally, Andrew Parker to the Seattle Transit Advisory Board. And the Transit Advisory Board is very important, especially as we look to the future, as we get out of the COVID pandemic and recover, and we try to expand transit ridership again. Seattle was a national leader in that. So, Andrew is an avid user of Seattle Transit when he was growing up and has a career in marketing in Seattle and will, I think, serve us well on the Transit Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Before I talk about the next appointment, Mary Claire Sokolowski, I need to pause and go back to Jessica Vu, and I'll let the clerk go ahead and read in the record what we need to do.
Councilmember Juarez, at this point, we, yeah, Councilmember Juarez, thank you for that. Right now, at this moment, we're going to be holding all 19 appointments, so we can ensure that we do one more roll call vote to confirm the appointment of Jessica Vu and appointment 1660, which was amended.
Okay, so, do we just move? Do I, what do I do?
We will call the roll.
Okay, see, go ahead. Call the roll.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales? Thank you. Mosqueta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about one of my, one of our point, are the mayoral appointments. That's Mary Claire Sokolowski. And, again, this is another mayoral appointment that describes Mary's passion for the arts. It's a great match for the industries connected to the CL Center. She's part of the Get Engaged Program and is excited to have a deeper understanding of Seattle's local government. Before I say anything more about Mary Claire, let me just add this. This morning, when we went through all the, kind of following where you were at, Councilmember Peterson, I just want the public to know that when we are looking at these appointments, we're looking for the people who want to be appointed and volunteer on the Landmarks Preservation Board, the Board of Park Commissioners, the Immigrant Refugee Commission, the CL Advisory Commission, the CL LGBTQ Commission, the CL Women's Commission, the CL Human Rights Commission, the Commission for People with Disabilities, the CL Arts Commission, the Pedestrian Advisory Board, the CL Pedestrian Advisory Board, the Technology Advisory Board, CL Bicycle Advisory Board, CL Transit Advisory Board, CL Retress Commission, Urban Forestry Commission, CL Design Commission, Pioneer Square Preservation Board, the Community Involvement Commission, and the CL, dare I say CL Planning Commission. So, there are, these are just incredible, that we have 21 appointments to over, almost 10 different, 11 different commissions. And so, I didn't get a chance to share that this morning, but I just wanted the public to know that there is a wide variety of commissions and appointments, and it's nice to see all these folks want to step up and do their part. Okay, so now that I've done that, let's see. Are there any other further comments on the appointments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointments?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and the appointments, all of them are confirmed. Congratulations to our new appointees to all these phenomenal commissions. Okay, so we will go to the next item, item 23. Will the clerk read the short title of item 23 into the record?
Agenda item 23, Resolution 31974, setting the time and place for a hearing on the appeal of Robert Lexler, hearing examiner case number CWF-0149.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 31974. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember, that's me, as the sponsor, I will address the item. This bill sets the time and place for a hearing on one appeal to the hearing examiner's findings and recommendation report of the Waterfront Lid or Local Improvement District Number 6751. This resolution sets the hearing of the appeal to January 5, 2021, and the regularly scheduled Public Assets and Native Communities Committee. To meet the requirements of the quasi-judicial rules, council must take action this week via this resolution, and this is a mandatory procedural matter, and we have voted on these in the past. I recommend council confirm Resolution 31974.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
I, I.
Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? That's Nagin you hear over there making comments, just thought I'd share that. Okay, so other business. Are there any other further business to come before the council? Okay, well, I have some. There's no objection. I will be excused from the October 26 City Council meeting. Hearing no objection, I am excused from the October 26 council meeting. Okay, colleagues, this concludes the items on, of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting is on Monday, October 26 at 2:00. But before you go, before we adjourn, we will return at 5:30 for our Metropolitan Park District Board meeting, in which you are all board members for public comment, a public hearing. We're going to review two resolutions and have a presentation by Superintendent Jesus Aguirre, and with that, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.